I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 12th meeting of the New Bern Board of Aldermen. And tonight, the prayer will be given by Alderman Kinsey.
Good afternoon Pastor Bryant. I'd like for you to come to the podium please and open up with prayer for us tonight. Thank you so very much for being here. And Pastor is from the Biblical House of God.
Yes. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for you said in your word that in all things for us to give thanks. So we thank you for Mayor Outlaw and we thank you for the Board of Aldermen's who know the importance of prayer. So on their behalf tonight, Father, I'd ask that you would allow your wisdom and your guidance to guide them tonight as they make decisions on behalf of this beautiful city, New Bern, that not only will affect them, but will affect the different communities. Father, continue to remind them that all that they do here and all that they accomplish here is for the greater glory of you and for the service of humanity. This we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, at this time, would you have a roll call please? Uh, sorry, I forgot my name. Would you join me in the pledge, lead the flag of our God's greatness?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Blackiston.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Mitchell.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Odom.
Now, at this time, we have requests and petitions of citizens and we have very interesting questions. Yes, sir, go right ahead.
If you may, I'd like to make amendment to the agenda. I have a couple of presentations that I would like to present right after the consent agenda.
Okay. Now, do you, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
And do we have a second to that question?
Second.
We have a second by Alderman Kinsey as a further discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All approve. At this time, our, um, our person that wants to come on up and speak, we've been talking a little bit about places to charge electric cars and I don't know if you saw today that Tesla is coming out with some locations throughout the United States. So I want you to be on top of that one for us.
Yes, sir.
So go right ahead.
My name is Jeffrey Cheek and I'm moving here from San Francisco, California. And I've chosen New Bern because it's my home state. I came from Ashboro, right in the center of the state where the North Carolina Zoo is. But mainly for the fact that you have municipal power and I think that it's a unique opportunity to sell electricity and to benefit all citizens by establishing an electric car charging network. Mayor Outlaw mentioned that Tesla, we also have Volkswagen, BMW, Ford, and Chevy and Volvo all investing billions of dollars into the, um, into the infrastructure and into the cars themselves. Once drivers get a hold of these cars, they'll find that they're more economical, less maintenance, higher performing, cheaper to own. And if New Bern can establish a charging network, then we can begin to attract visitors from outside the area within an 80 mile range and have them come to New Bern with fresh ideas, fresh commerce, and a peace of mind that they can come to New Bern and recharge their vehicles and refill. Without it, they might bypass us and they may go to other, other progressive towns that are establishing such as the ones that are promoted by Duke Energy who provides a $50,000 grant to the town, $5,000 for each installation. It was part of a settlement from 2002, a Clean Air Act settlement from Duke Energy. And they fulfilled those such as in towns as Kinston, which is within range of Raleigh, to get them well on their way down to New Bern from Raleigh. You'll be seeing new cars starting in January from Nissan, which is the type that we own. It currently has an 85 mile range, but the new ones will have 120 mile range, which is well within the range of Raleigh. And then there are state incentives, a $10,000 rebate from the state of North Carolina and a $7,500 rebate from the federal government towards the purchase of these vehicles. What that results in is an aftermarket, very affordable used car. So you have a choice. You can go new or you can go used. And if you go to your dealership, you may get some resistance because they're selling a certain type of inventory with a certain profit margin. And this is a new idea that does create anxiety and uncertainty. But with a little research, I believe that we would all agree that this is the future and it's a safer option and it's a secure option for the city of New Bern. I wanted to thank the Board of Aldermen and Mayor Outlaw for hearing me and letting me attend the parking committee meeting today. I think that there is a, several options for monetizing the sale of electricity since you do own it and creating or establishing some parking spaces downtown that will be sort of a benchmark. And then you have your residential offerings. And what I'm proposing is that we try to fast track the permitting process and even establish a grant or rebate system similar to what Duke Energy provides customers outside of New Bern. And that's all.
A couple of things you mentioned I thought were interesting is that there's three types of charging, the fast charge and you get the 80 miles for the two, you know.
Yes, sir. For the residential, you have, we have three, their terms are level one, level two, and level three. And they have to do with how much amperage you're providing to the individual charge. And so the most typical that we have is level two out in California, which will recharge your full battery within four hours. And that was my vision for New Bern is, is a customer or a shopper or visitor coming across the bridge into New Bern and staying for four hours and having someone take care of them. And my idea was the fireman, the old Fireman's Museum at 408 Hancock has an ideal situation. It's centrally located and there's a city parking lot next to it that would easily facilitate several charging stations to fulfill this need and serve the public. And, and, and then there could be level three chargers where they could charge in 30 minutes. And then the level one charge is what you might find at your residential, like a rental house. You could have, you can invite progressive drivers that come to New Bern to live and to rest assured that they can recharge their vehicle overnight at the, at the residential rate. And as far as monetizing, the equivalent of a kilowatt hour as far as a gallon of gas is you could charge, we're happy to charge, or we're happy to pay out in Alameda, about 45 cents per a kilowatt hour. And that's a pretty good markup considering your rates here that you, you generate and or you're able to acquire through the city of New Bern. Of course, those could be adjusted for different economies, but that's just my, my idea as a way to promote it and to monetize it and to serve the future needs of the city of New Bern.
We know it's coming. I think I read news observed today that China has symbolically said that they're going to eliminate combustion engines by, they didn't say a date, but that's the first.
Yes, sir. The pollution is so bad in Shanghai that it's a health issue. And as we, as we can, as we witnessed in the past two weeks with the excess energy that are in our oceans, that we're having stronger and stronger storms that can affect us, especially a concern here at the coastal region. So any efforts that we make is going to improve that to eliminate the excess energy that's going into our oceans and put it in the form of clean, clean energy. And I thoroughly believe in it. I've been thinking about it for 20 years. I've been breaking my back for 10 years working for Solar City and other providers out in California. And just as a matter of that, I participated in over 2,000 installations of solar panels. And I estimate that I save, or those systems save customers in California over $2 million a year in electricity. So just put those numbers into the scale here and consider it.
Thank you for your presentation and we'll talk some more.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Anybody have a question? Okay, at this time, we're going to go over the consent agenda. Is everybody in agreement with the consent agenda?
I'm making a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Mitchell as a discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same. At this time, Alderman Taylor.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Mayor.
Aye.
Um, I don't know, I'm thinking about Jeff Oldham. Good evening. On August the 12th, my group, Vision Forward Group out of New Bern, we did an event along with NC Med Assist, Old North State Medical Foundation, Dr. Bonwell, and Carolina East Medical Center at Stanley White 901 Chapman Street. And we, it's called Overcount of Medication. And we gave people in need of medication. You would not believe how many people we served. We served 1,700 people in about five hours. So we did an outstanding job. But we're not, I'm not here to talk about what we did, but I let you all know that we did an outstanding job. Community did an outstanding job. And without the city of New Bern supporting us, this event wouldn't have been successful as it was. So I'm one of those, I don't like to have someone do something for me or for my organization or my group and not recognize them. Some people like the people to do things and don't want to recognize them. When people do things from their heart, they don't look for recognition. But at least you can say, I thank you. I appreciate you. So at this time, I want to present the city from Vision Forward in appreciation of your support. Thank you for your community engagement. City of New Bern, North Carolina, August the 12th, 2012, Vision Forward Group, Alderman Victor J. Taylor, Dr. Sidney Bonwell, and the Old North State Medical Foundation.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. But you can stay. Another thing I say, it goes right along with what I just said about the city of New Bern. The city of New Bern as a whole is a customer service entity. Each department supposed to deliver customer service. The police department delivers customer service. The fire department, customer service. Planning and zoning, customer service. Finance, customer service. Park and rec, customer service. So we as a whole city is a whole city of customer service. And every staff member should have that motto that they are there and they are here to promote and to give customer service. And if they've been here a long time and forgot what they are here for, they need to be trained again. If they're here new and have not been trained, they need to be trained. And I say this because I've had an issue with one of the departments, and I'm the Alderman. And if I'm had, if I had an issue with one of the departments, what would be a regular citizen? They would have problems as well. And we don't want citizens that have problems with. We want to make sure everybody's trained on customer service because we give them things and they in turn pay for it or we give them, give it back to us. I say this because the individual I'm talking about now should be a trainer. You know, some departments have trainers to train staff to be customer service oriented. And this individual has gone, I seen the individual go above and beyond the call of duty. And when a person does that, I like to recognize them and they need to be recognized. So at this time, I want to say on behalf of Vision Forward, Old North State Medical Foundation, Dr. Sidney Bonwell, Carolina East Medical Center, NC Med Assist out of Charlotte, we want to recognize one of the staff members from the city of New Bern, Ms. Eva Osteen Bell. Ms. Eva, the day I was, I'm speaking on, that I had an issue with one of the departments, she came through and went above and beyond the call of duty. She didn't do anything illegal or anything out of ordinary, but she did something that she didn't have to do. She could have left it like it was and it would have went south, but she made sure it went north because she's a customer oriented person. She's a community engagement person. Anytime you ask her to do something, she's going to do it, whether it's after 5 o'clock or before 9 o'clock. She's going to do what needs to be done to make this city, this county, a better city and county. So on behalf of Vision Forward in appreciation of your support, thank you for going above and beyond, Ms. Eva Osteen Bell, Vision Forward Group. Staff members, lead by example. If you want to know how customer oriented, customer service should be, watch Eva at work. Man, thank you very much.
Okay, so at this time, the presentation of the 2017 National Night Out, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. As the Board, at this time, I'd like to call Police Chief Summers to come up. He's got a video that he wants to share with us reflecting upon this year's National Night Out event. And the communities that participated will be recognized and presented a certificate by the chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Aldermen. Again, what makes this city so special is the way we celebrate and the way we can join together tonight. We're going to just reflect on what happened on National Night Out. I'm going to have Officer Longmire come up and kind of give a summary. Then we're going to have two community members say a few words, Ms. Layton and Ms. Blackiston. And then we're going to see a video after that. After the video, we want to call the Aldermen and the Mayor down and we're going to present the certificate, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just a short synopsis of what took place on National Night Out. It was the 34th Annual National Night Out 2017. And it was celebrated with about 22 communities, about two of them combined together, something like that. And we started off the kickoff the day before. And two of the retirement communities, which was the first time we've done that, but it turned out pretty good. We started off at the courtyards of Burn Village and then went on over to Home Place. And that was the day before, July 31st. And on August the 1st, which is the national celebration, the date of, we started off at Carolina Colors about 3:00 PM and broke off into four caravans and then went off to the different communities, ending up in Kings Row. We had about 37 plus officers, civilians from the police department, the fire department, EMS, Carolina East EMS, which was their first time, and they enjoyed themselves as well. So we'd like to thank, I'd like to thank all of you for participating. We have some that wasn't able to make it tonight to the meeting, but we'll, we'll present to the ones who did make it tonight. So thank you very much for your participation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Alderman. I'm Maureen Layton. I know most of you. And I'm speaking here on behalf of my wife who, you people know her, but she's really a little bit nervous of being up in front of people if you know her. Aside, she really isn't. I want to talk about the benefits and everything National Night Out in our community. We were one of the original members to start when Chief came here. He came up with this idea of having individual National Night Outs. And I said to myself, that's either the most brilliant idea I've ever heard of or the craziest idea I've ever heard of. And through the years, I really have come to believe it's a very good idea because what it does, we started out small and we grew. But I think the biggest reward for this is the ability for the citizens to interact with the police in a environment of friendship, fellowship, a social environment so that when and if they have to react with them in a different environment on a professional basis, they can say, the guy I had a hot dog with the other night, or you and I were having chicken. So I think it makes it much better. I know that in our neighborhood, people have a tendency to call the police more often if something happens because they're not intimidated. I also have the, and fortunate to be one of the ones that ride in the caravans since it started. My wife does all the arranging and carrying out of the event in our neighborhood. And I remember one of the officers, officers saying to me that they like coming to our neighborhood on the National Night Out because they feel like they're a part of the neighborhood. They feel welcome and they don't feel strangers. So to me, that's one of the greatest benefits of National Night Out, of how it brings the community together to work together to make this city a better place and a crime-free neighborhood. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Denise Blackiston. I'm a board member of the Historic Riverside Neighborhood Association and served as the coordinator for this year's National Night Out along with my friend and neighbor, Deb Mahoney. And she also serves on, as a treasurer on our neighborhood association. I want to thank the New Bern Police Department, Fire Department, First Responders for sponsoring National Night Out. So as you are aware, this was Riverside's first National Night Out. So being our first, Riverside made a bit of history of their own on August 1st. Riverside neighbors and others from surrounding areas arrived at the Detective Donald M. Miller Memorial Park, which is the Avenue A Park by the Neuse River. And I want to stop here for a moment and also thank Eva Osteen Bell for helping to clean up the Avenue A Park. She's done a wonderful job and we had volunteers from Riverside as well. And that was right before our event. So in anticipation of receiving our guest of honor from New Bern's Police, Fire, and Emergency Departments, they did not let us down with their caravans arriving and emergency vehicle sirens resounding as they entered our neighborhood. You could feel the excitement in the crowd. Everyone enjoyed the fellowship, delicious lasagna dinner, and the well-received bake contest. And that was our interaction between the police officers. I heard that they loved to dance, but really none of our neighbors wanted to dance. So we had the dessert contest and the police officers voted that it was a tie between the banana pudding and the blueberry pie. So we're going to have to have them back next year, definitely. I know Chief Summers always enjoys our delicious Riverside desserts. For our neighborhood, National Night Out is an important event with turnover of residents within our neighborhood, like many others. There are new residents. They may not be familiar with local policies and programs. National Night Out increases citizens' awareness of the duties and responsibilities of our police department and first responders. Having police officers, firefighters, and other first responders into neighborhoods for National Night Out gives a recognition to the badge and allows our residents to get to know them better. We want to say thank you to Captain Lucas and to the Neuse River Community Policing District Officers. I know that's a mouthful, but you know who you are. They oversee many neighborhoods to include the Riverside neighborhood. Thank you to the Historic Riverside Neighborhood Association Board members, Deb, Newsom Williams, Bob Almetto, and our wonderful volunteers, John and Maria Layton and Paul Kent. We could not have had this event with these wonderful volunteers. A special thank you to all who helped make Riverside's first annual National Night Out a great success. In recognition of the support by the Board of Aldermen, Chief Summers and Officer Longmire, we would like to leave you with a token of our appreciation and a memento of Historic Riverside. So we have some T-shirts here that we will, we will have here for you. So being our first night out, a special thanks to Officer Longmire. She explains everything from the start to finish with the program. She was a big help and gave us great ideas. So thank you very much.
No, now the boys here. It's National Night Out 2017. We're starting at Carolina Colors. Time to be seen. Boys on lights and puppy dogs too. Inside, we've got a bounce house. So where are you? It's not all about the food, fun, and good times. It's about meeting your neighbors and taking back the streets for a crime. Outside, there's this wacky golf game. Team Colors against the New Bern PD. Officers Jensen and Anthony game. Now this I gotta see.
Five, four, three, two, one. You done?
Time's up. We're off to meet more neighbors. Now we pick up the other chief. A quick stop on Neuse. Fire rescue's got these big red trucks and we'll put them to good use. Tonight, we're taking Big Red to the Park in Pleasant Hill, right off Highway 55. This community's anything but chill. Celebrating National Night Out on playground and on swings. Wait, Chief Summers is holding a baby. You trying to tell us something? If you're not listening, this is the message you need to hear.
Yeah, it's early now. It's early now. You're on vacation.
We're going to the towers. We're going to the swings.
Off to Colony Estates now, talking safety far and wide. As New Bern Fire Rescue raises the flag, we get up close with an RV chopper. And thanks to Coastal Photo Club, we're getting National Night Out photos proper. In true neighborhood style, this celebration includes some great spells. Burgers, chicken, fish. Johnny Reagan's not going to share. Oh, well. Inside the Fire Rescue Safety House, it's a good time to practice fire escape. This night is about teaching kids and families safety all across the landscape.
I'll talk to Ben and Chris and Anthony. We're the high fire department. And if you can't wait to collaborate, gather the Twitter squad and make sure it's made available.
Colony Estates, National Night Out! At New Bern Towers, the night is about dancing. Even Chief Summers got in on it. Across the parking lot, Alderman Taylor's the judge. And this is Craven's Got Talent. Stop for a snack, share a hug. It's good news. Get to know your neighbors and police. Advice we can all use. Next, Trent Court, where summer is a blister. Hopscles to cool off. Or you can head through the mister. Chief talks to Marty Lainey, the Housing Director. How's National Night Out? He asks. Well, we have no objectors. Boys in the van, boys on the court. Over at the playground, Lieutenant Williams helps the tall win the short. Always up for a double hug. The girls like Captain Lucas. Round and round and round they go. They're going to be dizzy. Oh goodness!
I just want to say hello everybody. My name is Nick Lucas. I'm the captain for operations here with the New Bern Police Department. I know a lot of you already. I just want to thank y'all for coming out here tonight and just remind y'all that this is what our community is all about. Getting together, getting to know each other, and knowing how to, to help each other. When we have time for trouble, we need each other for support.
If you're downtown, head over to Bear Plaza on this National Night. All these people on a common mission. That's right. Hello, nice to meet you. Make introductions. Care to dance? Do you think these two are really talking safety? Lieutenant Ipan not leaving to chance. Across the way, P B's Italian ice is keeping the heat at bay. Our partners at Carolina East are first in line, but these people save lives. So that's okay. One last request for these folks at the piazza. National Night Out, red flag! Over to Don Miller Park, a New Bern sweet spot named for a hero, where you can get to know your neighbors and the calories are zero. Tonight Riverside's hosting a dessert contest. So grab a fork and open wide. Rumor has it Alderman Blackiston baked something. Now where can it hide?
First get four of those. Can I get four strong men? Because we're going to hold the chief back from this dessert table.
Go with that. I'm not sure four strong men will be able. Does everyone know what it means to stop, drop, and roll? Turn on the lights and sound the sirens. Everyone comes outside to see. This is how we roll up in your neighborhood. Did you think it was a lot of beauty? Our National Night Out takes us to King's Row, where I do believe it is written, "You must play cornhole, dance, eat." Oh, yeah, have group clubs with the Littens. There's pizza, hush puppies, barbecue, you name it. And the Callahan Bandstand grants up, a dance party, he's got a stage. Our men and women in blue, even the city manager, headed off a party ride. It's music for all ages. You can shuffle the twist and the electric slide.
So we thank you so much for all that you do and help us. You say?
National Night Out!
I'm going to call the communities that confirmed that they would be here tonight. So if I miss anybody and you're able to show up, just let me know if I miss anyone. Carolina East Health Systems, E M S. The Courtyards at Burn Village. Tryon Village. The Meadows. Courtyards at Burn Village. Did I miss anyone?
And Mayor, I believe we'll present the T-shirts at this time.
Okay, if you want to give group pictures with everyone, could y'all come around?
I'll be shy. You have to get to know each other a little bit.
All right, that's great.
I've got to also thank Officer Longmire. Officer Longmire coordinates the whole event and she does an excellent job, so let's give
And our next item is the Wayfinding Signs Swiss Bear presentation. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. On the 31st of May, 2016, Swiss Bear was awarded a grant in the amount of $18,400 for wayfinding signage. This is in addition to the existing wayfinding signage that we had currently installed several years back. These funds provided for 23 new signs that were placed along the New Bern riverfront between Council Bluff and Leander Morgan Park. Grant was received from the North Carolina Division of Public Health, Community, and Clinical Connections for Prevention and Health Branch and the North Carolina Department of Commerce, N C Main Street and Rural Planning Center. This grant was restricted to signage specifically. Swiss Bear partnered with New Bern Public Works Department for the design work, installation, and funding of the new poles. Ms. Harical is here tonight, and she's got a brief presentation that she's going to
Hi, thank you for having me here this evening. And this will be a brief presentation. Maria just pointed out that I know how to clear out a room, so. So anyway, this is a brief presentation on a grant that was received for wayfinding, and we used it for along the River Walk after consultation with Mr. Montane. The original application was a grant through the North Carolina Division of Public Health, Community, and Clinical Connection for Prevention and Health. I can't really read the rest of it, but it's through them and the North Carolina Department of Commerce and the North Carolina Main Street Rural Planning Center. Because Swiss Bear is the Main Street organization for the city of New Bern, we were given the opportunity to apply for the grant on behalf of the city of New Bern. And the whole purpose of the grant was to be able to promote healthier living and lifestyles, but it would have to be used within the designated Main Street boundaries, which currently exist from the Neuse River over to First and from the Trent River to Broad Street. So when Mr. Montane and I met to discuss the possibility of having some grant funds being used, we were looking at the River Walk area, which was under construction at that time. The Council Bluff wasn't yet completed, and I don't think Palace Point Commons was completed yet at that point in time. But knowing that there was going to be good connectivity from the Towers over to New and East Front Street, we thought this would be a good use of the funds that were going to be available. These funds were restricted to Main Street communities in the state of North Carolina for cities that already have existing wayfinding programs. There were a number of cities that applied. There were about six or seven that received the grant, and New Bern was one of the communities that received the grant. The grant application was made in the spring of 2016, and by the end of that season, we were given the grant. And we were awarded a grant for 23 pedestrian signs and valued up to about $18,000. The city provided an additional sign. We needed actually 24 signs in order to do the plan as we had developed it, and the city also has provided three poles. The grant did not include poles. It did not include design work, which is part of the reason why the grant needed to go to cities that already had existing wayfinding. Swiss Bear did the grant writing. The grant administration worked with Mr. Montane and Public Works in order to come up with a general plan, and we actually pulled together the wayfinding plan for the city and for these signs. The beginning and ending points, as I had mentioned before to you, was Burn Towers over to East Front and New Street. So there are some signs that if you go along Walt Bellamy, will be directional signs taking you over to River Walk, but the majority of the signs are signs along River Walk. There are set locations that we repeated over and over again as you approached that location. That location was moved to the top of the sign. And River Walk, when you are on the River Walk and a particular park along River Walk, as you reached that point along the River Walk, they would be in capital letters in order to designate that that's where you are currently. The city, as I had mentioned, had provided several poles. One of the poles was over near the Housing Authority. A second one is over by the Farmer's Market. And then a third one was by Union Point Park. We did need to do some collaboration with Tryon Palace because part of River Walk does go on the Tryon Palace property. So we did work with staff there to secure three signage locations that could be placed on the property that goes behind the North Carolina History Center. And as I mentioned, this is the end of the River Walk. And as everybody here also knows, this section of the River Walk is now actually part of the Mountain to Sea Trail. So we were very happy that we were able to get the signage in place. And then just finishing off with just a nice view of how pretty our River Walk actually is, and this is a view right behind the Palace, on Palace Point Commons. That's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for that presentation, and I know the New Bernians are going to really enjoy all this new signage. If I have any comments. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hey, at this time, we're going to have I Number Seven consider adopting a resolution approving an amended and restated lease agreement with the Community College. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. February the 28th, 2017, the city entered into a lease agreement with Craven Community College for the property that's located at 205 First Street, also known as the Volt Center. This Economic Development Administration grant also required that the lease be revised to comply with federal guidelines, and the needed changes have been incorporated into an amended and restated lease agreement, which is before you tonight. Myself or the attorney will answer any kind of questions you may have, but basically, this is just to essentially change some of the language necessary under federal law and requirements based on the E D A grant.
Does the Board have questions? Yes, sir.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving and amending and restate lease agreement with Craven County, Craven Community College for the property at 205 First Street.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Kenzie, is...
Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Kenzie. Is there further discussion? See, now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, Mr. Stevens, are we going to pull item eight?
Yeah, we need to pull item number eight. There was some issues with the map, and we needed to get back with the surveyor to have that completed, so we'll have that on the next agenda, sir.
Okay. Item number nine, consider conducting a public hearing to adopt a resolution to exercise the powers, duties, and responsibilities of a House authority. Consider adopting a resolution to designate the Board of Almen to exercise the powers, duties, and responsibilities of a House authority. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Davis. He's going to briefly go over Part A, and then I'll cover the Part B of this item number nine.
Mayor, members of the board, this item has the potential to be a bit confusing, so we'll go very slow. As City Mayor stated, Part B is an infrastructure agreement that you're familiar with. This is a project we've been working on for at least the last five years regarding a low-income housing project that lies just west of Third Avenue. And you'll recall that that agreement provides that the city will convey funds to extend a street to facilitate that project, as well as convey some real property. You'll also recall, over the last year, you've had an education in what the city can and cannot do with real property. You're familiar with the upset bid process and how all that works. Unfortunately, our municipal statutes don't let cities convey real property to for-profit entities without adequate consideration. To do that, we need the authorities, we meaning you, the city, need the authority of a housing authority. Housing authorities have the ability to convey land to private entities whose purpose is to provide low-income housing. So for the board to have that authority to exercise those powers, we need to have a public hearing where you can hear any evidence that comes up regarding insanitary or inadequate housing within the city and the surrounding area, or a lack thereof. The purpose is to show that the city needs low-income housing. At the close of that public hearing, I would imagine you will adopt a resolution making those two findings and giving yourselves the authority to exercise the powers and duties of a housing authority. The confusing part is, this has nothing to do with the New Bern Housing Authority. You are not creating a second housing authority. You're not competing with the housing authority. You're just getting the powers that they have so that you can enter into the agreement that's coming up under Part B that includes the conveyance of real property to a for-profit entity who will provide low-income housing. We good?
Yeah.
The mouthful?
Well, yes.
Okay.
Staff, have any other comments or presentations?
Not this time, sir.
At this time, we're going to open a public hearing. Anybody would like to come forward, ask any questions, make any comments concerning the same, you're welcome to do that.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Kenzie to close the public hearing. Is there a discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, aye.
I'd like to make a motion, but it's a mouthful.
Yes, sir. Your motion would be to simply adopt the resolution to exercise the powers, duties, and responsibilities of a housing authority.
That's my motion.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Mitchell. Is there a discussion?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis, those powers and that designation remain in effect or in force for what period of time?
Until the board rescinds those powers, so that they would be in place for you to do other things to assist this project or any other low-income housing project.
So it basically carries to any other particular project?
Yes, sir.
And it remains in effect until it's rescinded?
Until rescinded, and if the board would, is considering rescinding those, I would certainly recommend to you that the Gaston project be fully completed before the board entertains rescinding those powers.
In your memory, has this ever been done by the city board before?
No, sir. First time that I can recall in 30 years where the city has conveyed real property to a for-profit entity to provide low-income housing. And this is the only tool we have to allow for that.
But this is the normal recognized method where other municipalities convey property to a for-profit entity to develop low-income housing?
Garden variety technique. Nothing mid-tier.
Alderman White has a question.
The question I have is that if we're given the power to build those units, after those units are complete, I'd like to have the city power rescinded.
And we can certainly make note of that, and at the completion of that project, we can bring it before you for that consideration.
Oh, can we do that tonight? Can we add that to what we're going to do? So they won't have to worry about it when it finishes automatically?
Yes, sir. I'd like to reflect on that. Rather than pull the trigger now, I'd like to reflect on any adverse consequences that might have. Certainly can take note of that and keep track of it for you. But I'd hate to muddy the water and have a problem that we can't address, and that might make it more confusing.
Mr. Davis, does this present any additional liabilities or, I don't know what the word, anything else? Basically, does it burden the board and the city with anything additive?
No, sir.
In terms of potential litigation or liability?
No, sir. We're simply picking back on the statutory authority that a housing authority has that the city otherwise wouldn't have. All we're doing.
And this is specified by North Carolina statutes?
Straight out of the statute.
With this one.
And that's why we're having the awkwardness of a public hearing and jumping through peculiar hoops to do this, but it's exactly what is required by the statute.
Okay, is there any other discussion? We do have a motion. Second. Is everybody good with this? Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman White.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Motion carries now. Mr. Stevens, there's a Part B to that.
Yes, sir. I'm just going to kind of detail real quickly what this means. Part B is to consider adopting a resolution approving an infrastructure agreement with Gaston Boulevard Phase One LLC and Gaston Boulevard Infrastructure LLC. Essentially, as you recall, there's a lot of history in this particular project, like Attorney Davis said. This has been going on for five-plus years that I'm aware of, to where the board was considering utilizing some of the lots that were create, well, I wouldn't say they were created, they were already there, but some of the demos that occurred along Third Avenue, all those properties through a CDBG process became the city's ownership. And in doing so, some of those lots were identified as potential accessibility options for this particular development. So to further facilitate the development of this particular site, which will have affordable senior apartments on it, an infrastructure agreement is needed and is in the amount of $230,000 grant from the city. This grant will provide the financing to facilitate the construction of infrastructure, which would be the roadway entering into the particular project and the conveyance of an extension of Elm Street and the upgrading and relocating of various underground utilities that are on that site to help facilitate the development. So at this point, the board, having conducted the public hearing, having exercised their powers and duties and responsibilities of a housing authority now, if you choose to move forward, we will need to adopt a resolution approving this infrastructure agreement with Gaston Boulevard Phase One LLC and Gaston Boulevard Infrastructure LLC.
Okay. Yes.
This project, as city manager and the city attorney has a little too, has been going on. It's been talked about since about five or six years. We've, the previous board has approved all the necessary approvals that need to be done. Mr. Troy Smith is in the audience, one of the spearheads of it. Thank you for all your work. We just need to move forward because the drivers are sitting in the seat right now. They're just waiting for our words to go. Low-income elderly homes in the Third Avenue area, Gaston Boulevard, is very much needed. We've been talking about it, and I've been talking about it and talking about it. It's time to move forward. So if there's not any questions, any more questions, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving an infrastructure agreement with Gaston Boulevard Phase One LLC and Gaston Boulevard Infrastructure LLC.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Mitchell. Is there further discussion?
Just one question, Mayor.
Yes.
How many units are we talking about here?
Eighty.
Eighty?
I think it's eighty, is it eighty-two? I was thinking it was six. Eighty, exactly.
Eighty, okay.
Any other questions? Have a roll call starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number ten, consider adopting a resolution approving the realignment and dedication of Third Avenue. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. As cleaning up some of this work of the items that we just adopted and took care of there, Gaston Boulevard, as you recall, was part of a CDBG project where we acquired all of that property. And in doing so, we also realigned Third Avenue so that it made a direct connection into First Street. Since doing that, the, I guess, the realignment right-of-way has never been completed. And we wanted to make sure that all of this stuff with previous items was taken care of prior to us adopting this new right-of-way for the Third Avenue project. So this will help assist with facilitating the public improvements necessary for the project, as well as clean up the property lines and right-of-way lines for the realignment of Third Avenue consistent with the project that's already been completed. So if there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer that. There is a map that was provided as a supplement that's at your desk tonight. If you wish to look at that, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those for you.
Does the board have questions?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the realignment and dedication of Third Avenue.
Second. Motion by Alderman Taylor, seconded by Alderman Kenzie. Is there further discussion? See, now let's have a roll call starting with Alderman White.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Item number eleven, consider adopting a resolution initiating the upset bid process for 1129 G Street.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. An offer of $1,500 has been received from Nether Hemingway for the purchase of 1129 G Street. The property is a vacant lot with a tax value of $4,000, and the offer represents 37 and a half percent of this value. The property was acquired by the city in Craven County in 2015 through tax foreclosure. At that time, it contained a structure which was later significantly damaged by a fire. The county conveyed its interest in the property in exchange for the city demolishing the structure. The cost of the demolition was $5,228.20. There's a memo that's included from Ms. Blanco that's in your packet, and we'll answer any kind of questions that you may have.
Does the board have questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution initiating the upset bid process for 1129 G Street.
Second. Motion by Alderman Mitchell, seconded by Alderman Kenzie. Is there further discussion? Have a roll call starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kenzie?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number twelve, consider adopting a resolution designating the Director of Development Services to intake appeals and comments on flood insurance rate maps. Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Plenary flood hazard data and maps for the city of New Bern and Craven County have been issued by FEMA and the North Carolina Department of Public Safety. A statutory 90-day appeal period is provided for community officials or property owners who may want to formally object to the information included in the data or maps. It's necessary to designate someone who will intake and receive those appeals and comments during this time period. This time period will terminate on the 17th of November, 2017. The proposed resolution designates our Director of Development Services, Jeffrey Dreher, or his designee, which will probably be Morgan Potts, the city planner, as those individuals who will receive those comments.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment or two. You know, you're going to see more and more 500-year and 1,000-year events in the future, and so I hope you do get a lot of comment about that. My one comment would be to continue to stress proper size of culverts in New Bern. That really actually has nothing to do with this, but it's all about flooding. And I'm not so sure. At some point, the city's probably going to look at a different free board from what we have. So anyway, I look forward to a lot of discussion on that.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution designating the Director of Development Services to intake appeals and comments on flood insurance rate maps.
Second. Motion by Alderman Mitchell, seconded by Alderman Taylor. Is there further discussion?
Yes, sir. Question, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
In this particular instance, once a change is made in a flood map designated certain properties, in the case of a mortgage holder, that could incur charges on a mortgage?
Yes, sir.
At home?
Entirely possible.
Yeah, does happen.
Yes, sir.
So that is part of the process that we're talking about here in terms of responsibility for development services.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's...
Good point.
Well, when you've got areas in New Bern that are not in Zone AE and they're getting water in the house, there's something a lot more dynamic than a flood map. It's just, again, undersized opportunities to get that water out of New Bern. And you have one, sir, that we would look at during the Saturday event. Yes, sir?
What I was going to ask, if we're talking about houses that may already be in the flood plain, if they're in the flood plain, have FEMA had anything to say about any of those areas that we're supposed to be already, that's supposed to already be covered by FEMA?
Well, I mean, that's...
And if it's an area that FEMA had, we can't do anything in that area, can we? We can. All those houses have been moved?
I wouldn't say that all of them have been moved. The ones that have applied for and received individual assistance through FEMA, they may have mitigated some of their issues through raising their house. FEMA did buy out some homes, and we further more demolished the homes that, or I guess the grant funds paid for the demolishing of the homes that were on those particular lots. Those lots were then given to the city with restriction that they cannot be built upon in the future. That's come before the board on several instances where we have a vacant lot that adjacent property owners to lease for a certain period of time. They just have a right to maintain it and utilize it as a yard. They can't put any structures on it. But ultimately, it really, if there's additions to the areas that are in the flood map, then at that point, there would be, you know, required insurance, flood insurance on particularly some of those homes. And, you know, obviously, at that point, they could apply for those individual assistance grants if there were future issues that arise due to flooding.
Okay. We do have item number, here, number 12. If the board wants to take action on that, we do need to designate someone within our Department of Development Services to initiate and monitor and mitigate that process.
We have a motion on the table?
Yeah, okay. Let's start with a roll call with Alderman White.
Alderman White?
You lost me again when I was talking to the attorney and Mark about the flood and FEMA. That's what we're talking about, putting new houses or what?
FEMA has put out new maps, and in those new maps, there are some other affected properties based on the new maps from what used to be the old flood maps. And so in the public comment period, FEMA requires a designee of the city to intake and receive those comments. So at this point, this item is designating our Director of Development Services, or his designee, which would probably be Morgan, to receive those comments from the public. designee, which would probably be Morgan, to receive those comments from the public. So it's basically specifying a point person for the public to go to to issue their comments.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
I'm gonna make another comment like the mayor just made, you know, and one of our biggest concerns is pipe sizing. Because what's is happening is we're having a lot of small pipe that's running a lot of, a lot of water through. The velocity is so fast that the water can't go through. And I think that's one of the problems that has caused a lot of our problems. You know, when you build a development, each development has a pipe sizing that's entirely different, and water's coming from so many different directions, so I would like to make sure that that's something that is looked at.
I'd like to make a comment about that. For two years, I've been trying to get funds established to provide capital improvements for stormwater, and twice it's been voted down. Now, we do have a million and a half dollars of funding out there that we've secured, but, you know, we should've been working on this sooner.
Yes, but that million and a half only addresses the very most critical infrastructure problems. It does not address the flooding problems and the pipe problems that are going to be causing problems in years two, three, four, and five.
Okay. So, item number thirteen, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the disposal of surplus property. Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Staff has deemed a two thousand and one Vermeer TG four hundred A tub grinder that is, useful life has been exceeded and it's no longer needed. Based upon board resolution that was adopted December the thirteenth of two thousand and five, it designates the city manager with the authority to declare surplus property in a value of thirty thousand or less. It's estimated that, based on some experiences and some research, that we may receive funds through an electronic bid process that may exceed thirty thousand. So it requires the board's authorization for us to surplus this property and sell it electronically. So that is what is before you tonight, is the board's authorization for us to electronically sell a two thousand and one tub grinder TG four hundred A.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution authorizing the disposal of surplus property by electronic auction, in this case, the two thousand and one Vermeer Tub Grinder.
So, I'm... Second.
Motion by Alderman Mitchell, seconded by Alderman Kinsey, is there further discussion? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Blackiston.
Alderman Blackiston?
Yes.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes.
Alderman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman White?
Yes.
Okay, this time we're gonna go to appointments. Does Alderman Blackiston have appointments tonight?
No, sir.
Alderman Taylor?
No, sir, not yet.
Alderman Mitchell?
No, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
No, sir.
Alderman White?
No, sir.
Okay, let's go to attorneys' report? City managers' report?
I have three things, Mayor. One is regarding a house that the board has directed the staff to pursue and tearing down. Just wanted to give y'all a quick update. City attorney met with the county's attorney, and that particular property disposition has been turned over to him for action. As you will recall, there was a former attorney that, or an attorney that was formally charged by the county to pursue foreclosures on dilapidated structures or tax foreclosures, and this was one that has been on the list, has been going on for a long time, that the board made a point of pointing out this one is just beyond saving. And just wanted to let you know that that has been turned over to the county attorney, Jimmy Hicks, at this point, and he is pursuing that very strongly to get it to some closure. So at this point, we may want to wait a couple months just to see what the disposition of that is, and, but I obviously have received direction from the board. I definitely can pursue that if that's what the board wishes for me to do, if that is the direction I've gotten. But I do know that that is being strongly pursued by the county's attorney at this point. Second item I have was, basically, there's two letters that I've received that I wanted to kind of share along with the board and make some recognition. North Carolina Association of Municipal Electric Systems sent a letter. You may have, may or may not have seen it, but they wanted to personally thank the city of New Bern for their assistance in hosting the two thousand and seven Nakames Conference and Lomond's Rodeo here in New Bern. It was a great success for them, they mentioned in their letter. They looked forward to visiting New Bern again in the future, which is a great thing because they brought a lot of people in here, and if everybody recalls, we got a lot of questions about what appeared to be us building a new substation down at the traffic circle, but that was not the case. It was for a conference and a rodeo event. And they particularly named several people that they wanted to thank, which was Mike Harper, Earl Crowder, Carl Toller, and the electric utility crews for the exceptional job that they did in having that particular site set up for that event, which brought in many municipalities across the state of North Carolina participated in that. The other one that I wanted to recognize real quickly was a letter that was written to me from Mayor Chuck Tyson from Trent Woods, and essentially wanted me to let the mayor, the board members know, and the department heads that participated, and their gracious thanks for participating in assisting them in an issue that arose recently with regards to a stopped-up pipe. They asked for our assistance, we sent some trucks over there and assisted them, and had we not done so, he said that they would have experienced far greater loss in some of their homes there than what they did. So on behalf of the citizens of Trent Woods, he wanted to issue a sincere thanks for the helping hand, and to let us know that if they need, if we ever needed anything from them in the future, to please give them a call. So I just wanted to share those few things with you.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir, that's it.
I would like to start out the new business tonight by offering, on behalf of the city and the board of Alderman, our condolences to the V.T. Odom family, Jeffrey Odom's mother passed recently, and it's a really difficult time, and I hope that they will be in your prayers and thoughts as the weeks and months go by. At this time, Alderman Blackiston?
Yes, sir, just two items. First, I'd like to thank the city manager and staff of Public Works for the work, wonderful work that was accomplished on City Hall, the roof, the block face on the tower. Having ridden up there with city manager and a couple other folks, it's, that high work is dangerous, it's time-consuming, but needed to be done, and we appreciate the efforts they made to get that project taken care of in a timely, as timely as possible, and good funding mechanism there, too. So Stevens, appreciate that, appreciate that effort, well deserved. I'd just like to report to the board one item and make a motion. We today held our second meeting of the Master Parking Plan Advisory Committee over Development Services. I thought we had a good meeting. We're making progress, and we'll try to keep you advised of how we're going about that, going about that project, considering a number, a number of issues. And in that sense, and in that subject, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend two-hour parking enforcement until this Master Parking Plan Advisory Committee has reported out its parking recommendations to the board of Alderman on the twenty-fourth of October. And we feel that that's necessary to basically smooth out the level of playing field for everybody, that we don't have complaints coming in while we're in the process of trying to make things work better long-term, so.
So you want to suspend what?
Suspend citywide parking enforcement downtown, citywide, downtown parking enforcement for the period of time that this committee is in, is in session to come out with recommendations as directed by the board of Aldman on the twenty-fourth of October.
Okay, we have a motion here.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries.
That's it, sir.
Alderman Taylor?
Yes, sir, I got a couple of, not too many, but I got a couple of them. First, I want to give condolences and prayers out for classmate of mine that just passed on this past Saturday, Annette Gibson, who we want to ask everyone to continue to pray for the family, visit the family. Her home gone will be this Saturday at eleven o'clock, Faken Tabanaka Church in Norfolk, North Carolina. So condolences and prayers go out for the family. The twenty-sixth of August, Vision Four group, we did our information awareness forum and fun day in the big field in Craven Terrace. Thank the mayor, Alderman White, for coming out, and those of you that had prayers for us. A huge success again. The event is about informing kids how to succeed in various career fields, lawyers, doctors, engineers, military, sports, and it's also a fun day. In all those fields, we have someone to come back, you know, someone from around here that actually succeeded in those fields, and to inform our kids how to succeed in that field. We also have NC DPS transfer bus, how our police department, the sheriff department, probation out as well, as deterrent vehicles to keep our kids off these vehicles and on to the other side where careers are. So we, this is our eleven year of doing it, we will continue to do it. Thank the chiefs, all your support. Chief Summers, I just remembered. Again, Chief Summers was at August the twelfth event, and also Chief Boyd, your staff was there as well, but Chief Summers, I forgot to mention you last time. We did make mention, so Chief Summers, again, thank you for August the twelfth. August the twelfth was, twenty-sixth was a huge event, a huge success. Matt Montaigne, thank you for all your support, and everybody else that supported. Again, we will be doing it again next year, August the twenty-fifth. We already got a date scheduled, so please come out. August, September the sixteenth, this Saturday, I'm the spokesman for Craven County, Jones County, and Bama Co. County on prostate cancer awareness. Dr. Bonwell used to be the lead, he has stepped down, and I've taken over. I've been assisting him for the last ten years. So this year, this is the fourth year that Vision Four has done a prostate cancer support ride, and the event will start off, will be the sixteenth of September, this Saturday, kickstands up at eleven o'clock at thirty-seven fifteen, Martin Luther King, the old Joe Afford, where he keep his old cars. Who blood? Let me question that later.
I'm not touching anybody.
But it, I kickstands up at eleven o'clock. Please, all funds that's raised will be going to Journey of Hope, used to be Man-to-Man Cancer Group. Please come out and support this ride. Prostate cancer's ride is the second-leading cause, cancer cause mortality rate in the state, in the United States. So please, men, I consider prostate cancer just like breast cancer related. Please, men, get checked over the age of forty, all men, please get checked. With that said, again, the next weekend, myself, Carolina East Urology Center, the hospital, we will be doing a free prostate screening. That will be on the twenty-third of September, nine a.m. to twelve-thirty p.m. at the Craven, Carolina East Urology Center, seven oh five Newman Road. Please come out, totally free. It does two things. Most of you all in here has insurance, probably everybody in here has insurance, but it tells two things. One, if you don't have insurance, come out, get tested. Two, if you got insurance, make sure you go get tested. So it does two things while I'm talking. Please come out, tell people that don't have the insurance or just want to get tested. I want everybody to get tested, all right? This is where I found out I had prostate cancer, do a screening just like this. I had insurance, but I still went. Early detection, it makes a big difference. That's why I'm here today. So with that said, November the fifth, I just had an interview this week from City Hall with Ms. Beth Cooper, Director of Mercy Clinic, and Mr. Charles Kusman with the Mercy Clinic, and they're doing an event in your area, in our city. It's called Mercy on the Middle. They're gonna block off from Broad Street all the way down to East Front Street, and have a long table full of food. It's gonna be, the restaurants involved, Two-Four-Seven Craven, The Chelsea's, The Flame, Baker's Kitchen, Famous Restaurant, and Three Simmons. They all gonna make food to go on this table. So you need to contact Mercy Clinic and get the tickets. Don't know what their tickets cost, but chief check with them. Please, this is gonna be a wonderful event. We've all been invited. It's on November the fifth, starts at five-thirty, and will end when all the food is gone. So again, chief, there will be a lot of dessert. Again, thank you very much.
Alderman Mitchell?
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. The Board of Alderman meeting on the tenth of October is in conflict with Election Day. I would like to make a motion that we move that meeting until the following week, to October seventeenth.
Second.
Motion and second, does everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same.
That's all, sir.
Anybody on the board want to mention that was there Saturday? There was a really informational event at Stanley White Center for cell anemia, and the Burdys School of Medicine had a lot of individuals out there in Alderman White. I saw you out there, we hung out for a while. There were, there was pretty good crowd, could've been a lot better, and if we're fortunate enough to get here again, we want to really lift that up. This is the point here, the Burdys School has done it, it's the first year it's been done in New Bern, and we certainly want to do our part if we can get it back. So I just wanted to mention that, too. Alderman Kinsey?
Yes, I want to thank Matt for allowing these guys to team up with DOT a couple of weeks ago when we had that massive rain to come down, the floods, remember, any road and New School of Art, and the mayor was out there with me, pulling the big dumpster out of the water, and we was able to get the water to flow pretty quickly once we cleared all the drains up, because it was really filling up, and the folks' homes were beginning to flood. But by God's grace, we was able to remove a lot of debris, and thank you for having you guys out in such a turbulent weather that day. I'd like to come before the board tonight to ask for a donation for the organization...
The Else?
The Else. This guy, Mr. Jones, he's gonna be giving some awards away to some of the individuals in the community that does a lot of things, and I'd like to support him with five hundred dollars. He works with the Duffield Field Council, he works with, I think, he's done some work with the Boys and Girls Club. He's pretty much involved in a lot of events out through the city, so I'd like to contribute five hundred dollars to this guy.
Make the motion, or what?
Yeah, I like, yeah, that's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kinsey, seconded by Alderman White, is there discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries, whatever you have, sir.
That's it, sir.
Okay. Alderman White?
Yes, sir, I have at least three items. First item that I'll start off with is Hazel Avenue, going way back in the back where the ditches are, or Matt, I need to talk to you. Yeah, I appreciate you coming up front a little bit, sir. I mean, I can get the information from you, you know more about it than some of the other people I ask.
Sir?
What I want to know is, when we had the crew to go through there to clean out the storm drains, those bushes on Hazel Avenue and at the end of Hazel Avenue in the back back there, they have grown all the way up again, and when the water started rising the other day, it would've had trouble flowing through there because of some of the trash that was in there, but the bushes had already grown up and looked like little tree limbs. You know, I would like for you, if you could, get your crew, or get whoever you can, go over there, look and stand and clean it out, so the water can flow a little bit before we get anything even worse than what it is. The other question I'm gonna ask you, dealing with Chapman Street, Cedar Street, First Avenue, you know, I know y'all doing work over there, when and what are the estimated time when you might be able to finish?
The utility improvements on Chapman Street are looking approximately three to four, three or four weeks to complete, and as soon as that's completed, we'll come back behind it with the paving crew to do the resurfacing at that point. So you're probably looking four to six weeks by the time we get all the utility work done, and then the paving behind it.
Oh, yes, sir, I'm through, that's what I want to ask you, that was a question I'd like to ask you. Oh yes sir, I'm, I'm through. That's, that's what I want to ask you. You, that was a question I'd like to ask you. The other I'd like to thank, Mrs. Harris, uh, she had a program the same day Alderman Taylor had his. Her program, uh, they asked me, uh, I don't know how it happened, but I wound up being one of those that opened them up in prayer. And, uh, the thing about it that they was doing, uh, things for the youth happen, it's educational system, look like. She know more about than I do. That's about, I think it's the first time I ever been to her, one of her events. But, uh, I just liked the way things were going and what they were doing. I think every kid got something. She had a bunch of things out there. And I, I believe she did ready, it might be, gonna have another one sometime before the years. I, I don't know if it's October la- uh, not, but I'm through man, appreciate it. May, may, uh, mayor, may the lady explain her, what I talked with you.
Yeah.
I'm messing it up.
Okay.
Good evening mayor and Alderman. Um, so the event was a back to school bash that the Real Resource Center hosted. Um, and basically we just got, um, community partnerships with everyone to donate supplies and stuff. And, uh, like, um, we had Pizza Hut come out, Chick-fil-A donated, uh, we got water supplies from Pickly Wiggly, and we kind of set up a treasure map. So, all the individual kids had to go through each table to interact with individuals. And we invited all of the candidates to come out and speak so that children can learn about what the city does. And that was basically it. And like you said, he opened us up in prayer and it was, it was a good turnout. So, thank you.
Sure. She also had people that gave her handcuffs.
Oh.
I, I should have got one.
We did hear, oh, and we also, um, did registration for voters and we hit a record of having thirty-two people register to vote. So, that was awesome too.
Great. Okay, anything else sir?
No sir.
Uh, can you give me an update on the paving? And thank you for having gravel put on, I think it's News and Colony Drive because of the dip. Can you give us a little, uh, insight where we are on that part there, please?
Absolutely. Give you just a quick little update on where we stand with the, uh, FY seventeen paving project, um, as far as where we're working now and what we'll be, what we have remaining in the project. Currently, we have, uh, weather pending this week. We had rain today, so the contractor did not work. But the contractor this week and probably into the beginning of next week will be doing the resurfacing work over in the Colony Estates area. They have finished the patching, uh, several weeks ago, probably a couple, two months ago. And they'll be back this week, beginning of next week, doing the resurfacing work. Uh, once they complete the resurfacing work there, they will move over to this Queen Street area. Uh, they've got some full depth patching to do on Queen Street. Uh, while they're doing that work, we will be doing some sidewalk and curbing improvements on the block where the train depot was located. Uh, once that work has been completed, of course, then they'll come back and resurface the entire, uh, s- the entire street from, uh, Pollock all the way to the river at East Front Street. Uh, once, once that project is complete, we, we start getting into the, uh, the areas where the utility work is still taking place. We've got Cedar West, as I said earlier, it's got three to four weeks of utility work to be done. Uh, once that's been completed, we'll come back and resurface that street. And then we've also got the area of Meadows North. Uh, that project has probably got more like four to six weeks, uh, remaining in the utility work. And then once that's done, we'll come back and resurface that. Uh, once those areas are done, the only place we'll have left after that is the Oaks Road. Of course, you're gonna remember, we're gonna widen Oaks Road, uh, from Morris Auto Body Shop to the Jack Smith Creek Bridge. Uh, we've gone in there and done some shoulder work to stabilize the shoulder, widen everything out in preparation for the paving. So, we'll come back and do that. And then we'll also do the intersection of National Avenue and News Avenue where we'll be elevating the road, uh, approximately a foot and a half. Um, that's what's remaining on the project. Talking with the, uh, project manager we've got in Public Works and also with the contractor, they both are still comfortable that we'll be able to get all of it done this paving season, basically between now and probably the first of December, especially by Thanksgiving. Thank you sir.
Well, Jeff, uh, I don't know if it's you, uh, Jeff.
It's Jeff.
And, and Matt, Mark, Mark already know what I'm gonna ask. First Street, sidewalk.
I'll answer that one. Just, uh, met, uh, actually with DOT last week, um, late last week. And we discussed, uh, the, uh, with the consultant, uh, who is doing the drafting of the plans for the First Street corridor improvements, which include the bicycle lanes, road diet, and sidewalks. Uh, they have, uh, probably thirty to forty percent plans, I'm gonna call it, um, and wanted to get some comments back from, uh, the city with regards to, uh, those plans, uh, before they continue to move further. Uh, but they are coming along on those plans quite nicely. Um, it was, uh, it was kind of their anticipation to, to, uh, start, trying to think what the date was. Uh, they, they, their intent was to try to be done, I think, by June of next year, um, or May, June of next year. Uh, so, that goes, they have to go through a lot more process with, with state plans and approvals and things like that. Uh, there was thing, one thing that we discussed, which, uh, um, I'll, I'll, uh, I've got some investigating that I need to do with regards to the intersection of, um, First Street, Trent Road, Pollock, and Rim where it all comes together there. So, I'm gonna look at some stuff there, uh, specifically with the Homeroes Association President, uh, for Gant, uh, as well as with some DOT folks. Um, if we decide at that point to look at any kind of, of modifications to that particular intersection, it may extend that period just a little bit in, but ultimately that would be the goal is if we go based on the design, the way it is now, it'd be kind of a Mayas Juniors of next year to get into that next pavement cycle.
So, Yvonne, by May of June next year, the entire project will be-
Complete.
Complete.
Completed.
Completed.
Completed. If, as long as we don't get into making a lot of changes into that, that first Trent area. If we're in there doing the work, then it may be in our best interest to go ahead and make some modifications there if necessary, uh, instead of us having to come back in and, and do some modifications later. So-
Uh, the reason why, I'm sorry to cut you off. The reason why, you, y'all know why I'm, 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 I'm beating on this because we've been talking about it. I've been talking about the sidewalks in Supremo for a long time. Now, if we did the sidewalks prior to the, the other part of the road, could, would that affect the, could the sidewalk be done first
Well, you know, it, it, I would imagine that the, the state will probably want to do a general prime contact, uh, contractor. Um, and, uh, when they do just prime, ultimately, they will want to come in and do all that work simultaneously. It, it extends and, and extends the timeframe and exacerbates their cost if they split it up into different phases. And obviously, that would be cost that we would have to incur, uh, to do so. Um, I know we're interested in getting those sidewalks in. Obviously, we're gonna try to push it because we have the Workforce Development Center. I will say that, uh, there is light at the end of the tunnel. Uh, I just don't know that I would recommend that we, uh, accelerate it to the point to where we don't consider some of these other options to where we would have to come back and consider them and tear up stuff that we're having to spend money on now, but-
Yeah, I just don't want it to be, uh, Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel.
Right.
Meaning twenty-six to thirty-six thousand miles. Um, we've been talking about these sidewalks and I've been talking about these sidewalks for a long time. This is the only area that has, um, is not connected sidewalks wise in the entire city other than by the college. Old Trobe we're working. Alright, um, so, that's, that's why I'm keep beating. I, I told you all at every meeting, I'm gonna mention sidewalks and I've been mentioning sidewalks now for about a year. Uh, I almost forgot this time, but thanks for that. Uh, but yeah, I, I, I just want to make sure the tunnel is not so long. I want it to be in, in my lifetime.
There, there is some light, uh, light at the end of the tunnel. We, I want to get the project done. Obviously, it benefits that corridor, benefits the project. Uh, we just want to make sure it's done right.
Yep. I'll ask again next meeting.
Alderman White?
Very.
I have, uh, Mark, Matt, I got two more. When, when you was talking, you said something about December, this year. Are we talking, still talking about Oak Road?
Uh, the, yes. The completion of the entire FY seventeen project would be completed by Denver's December of this year. Now, as far as Oaks Road, now let me clarify that. That includes the widening of Oaks Road from Morris Auto Body Shop to the Jack Smith Creek Bridge, and also the elevating of the intersection of National and News.
Uh, the sidewalks included in that?
Uh, that is not part of this year's project. That is, that is not the case.
If there, is it because of the money situation at the time or what?
Um, it, it was, it was never in the scope of that work. We, we have discussed, uh, it was never in the scope of that particular project. We've discussed Oaks Road several times in the past. We're actually working now to put out a RFP, uh, to get some design work done for a couple of different projects. Uh, Oaks Road is one of them. Um, you know-
Does not include the sidewalk.
Okay.
That was, that was discussed with the board, um, and, um, we, we, it does not include sidewalks on Oaks Road at this time. If we want to come back in and consider that, there's gonna be, uh, a very, much more significant figure for us to look at putting sidewalks as well as timeframe and permitting. Uh, what we wanted to do was due to the pavement conditions that exist out there right now is get the resurfacing in along with the widening necessary to make the improvements. And then at that point, we could come back at some future date and look at the sidewalk improvements along that corridor. Um, anytime that we're gonna be looking at sidewalks along the Oak Road corridor, we're gonna have to deal with a lot of environmental issues with the Jack Smith Creek as well as those other locations where we have the low lying areas. And so, that's probably gonna require cammer permits, which is a very timely process. Um, and we didn't want to slow it up, I think, was the consensus, uh, with regards to resurfacing of Oaks Road. So, that's kind of where that is right now. And staff's working on the plans to, to get us to the point to where we can get that out for bit.
It's, it was my impression that the, the bigger Oaks Road project, not this year's, that will be completed by December, but the one that is currently in the works now that's fitting out the RFQ, is the, actually the three road project that includes Oaks Road, Trent Road, and Old Airport Road.
Well, look, don't, don't get me started now. We're going on a little too far. Let me let you go ahead and just close it out. So, we go on because I've heard that before. And first, we came up with the money. And the money was, was gonna be for Oaks Road to have that finally done. And then we threw in the airport and all the other, airport just got a, just got, uh, four hundred and some thousand dollars or something like that. Like they do their own road. Yeah, when I, when I start running my mouth, I know a little bit what I'm talking about. But, uh, I, 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 I see it. So, if the, I'm still working on it. I'm trying to get some funds if I can. I get some funds, I'll fund for the sidewalk. You know, that's what I'm working on. I haven't said anything to y'all about it, but I'm trying to. That's, that's it man.
Okay, anything else on the new business tonight? Do we need a, a closed section tonight?
Yes sir.
Is there any further business to come for the new board of Aldman at this time?
Make most of them, yeah, we're in there.
Second.
Motion and a second. Uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.